Commission. Um, so be please do advise means being held in accordance with the Brown Act. As um required with the emergency declaration. Covid nineteen governors. Or um from March seventeen to twelve thousand twenty. And the fact that if uh anybody. Out there watching tonight wants to be part of tonight's meeting. That Katie will be um. Flashing. The email address, phone number and the whole bit to be able to be a participant in tonight's meeting. So tonight we're gonna start off with the flag salute. Um. I wanna do the flag salute. Uh we're not standing tonight. Um Katie's gonna flash the flag uh again. If you've been part of these meetings, it's there's no disrespect involved um with what's going on. It's the fact that. It's the times running at the moment and when we get back to. Real life will be doing it in our life again and everybody will stand at attention. Do this, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Katie, can I get a roll call for tonight, please?
Call. Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley. There's not popped in Commissioner Church.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Chairman Mobley.
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Here.
And Commissioner Sights.
Here.
All right, thank you, everybody. So um we need to get approval for the March twenty-third meeting. The minutes from the March twenty-third meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March twenty-third. Meeting printed.
And I second.
That that would be February twenty-third.
Yes, I'm sorry, February twenty-third, you're right.
February twenty-third.
I second.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
My glasses.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sights.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. So we're gonna. Go to oral comment from the public. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be held two or three minute. We'll we'll play with that one if you should if you call in. Um but. Um. Please be advised by law. The commission. Is not able to deliver or take action on any issue presented during oral comment. So if anybody's out there wants to call in about anything that's not on the agenda tonight, please call in. Talk to us, we'll be happy to hear from you. And there's the number and passcode to get in. How's everybody's week been so far? Anything good going on, bad going on?
Normal.
Nor- normal. Wet week, huh? Not the spectacular. No big plans for anybody yet? We're setting up for next month to go to Vegas and we're hoping that's all wide open for we can go. For anniversary, so.
You guys are brave.
I'm gonna, we're gonna take a shot and I'm hoping it's gonna be ready to rock and roll um. Her son just went for a bachelor party and he said it was very restrictive why they were there. So they said while he's playing cards, they were very much on him about taking a drink from his. Free drink and putting his mask right back on as fast as he can, so I'm hoping it's not that quite that bad when we get there. All right, Katie, we see anything here, Nathan? You're not talking. I see a shake of the head. Okay, looking for a motion to close public comment.
I move that we close public comment.
I second that.
All right, Katie, you're muted.
Uh we don't technically need to do roll call vote or a motion to close it, but since we had a motion, I'm gonna do the roll call vote. Uh Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sights.
Yes.
All right, thanks, everybody. All right, so business at hand tonight. Is a concept design. Design review of building. That is being proposed of a seventy-seven square seventy-seven hundred square foot. Pre-engineered metal building for the senior center. I know we've gone over this, this is over on Gullitson Drive that we've all talked about once and now they have. Come to us with a. Pre-designed to see what we think about it and. I guess we're gonna need to get a little background on it again, so Liz, you up for that?
Yeah, thank you Chairman Mobley and members of the planning commission. So yeah, you did uh the planning commission did approve a conditional use permit on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. And um that's for the. Basically, the use of the site, um the activity itself and the layout, the parking lot and and just the general layout. Um. And one of the conditions is that um that it return for design review. And they did choose to do conceptual design review, which because you know, a good thing, it allows early discussion and for them to get a sense and. Um also allows the planning commission to make any comments, good or bad suggestions. Um. You won't be approving it at this meeting, they will. The applicant will return with the final designer view, so at this point the um they filled out an application form, but no fees have been paid, this uh free service. Um it is also stipulated as an option and the Fortuna Municipal Code and I'll just read what it. Um it states that the purpose of conceptual design review is to provide the applicant with the planning commission's tentative reaction to the general design concept of a proposed project. Such review shall not include a formal decision on the application. By the planning commission, so um. I'm gonna just go over the submittal, the design, the building elevations. Um pretty quickly and I'm gonna turn turn it over to the applicant. We do have, so the applicant being the senior center representatives and then we also have the project engineer or designer Nicholas Nothoff from. Um Witcher Engineering and we also have the Fortuna um building official here. He will be, I think his input is useful, he will be um in a reviewing the and approving the building plans and he also has. A really good sense about design and feasibility and metal buildings and things like that, so. I'm just gonna share the screen. And run through these really quickly. So this is the project location, it is located at the. Uh southeast corner of Ronerville Road and Gullitson Drive. Um and you did um. And you're familiar with this from the use permit application. And the zoning map, basically, I think it's helpful in this regard because it does show you what the neighboring in the surrounding zoning. On that side of Ronerville Road is commercial thoroughfare. And then um low density residential to the east and then on on the opposite side of Ronerville Road, there's really a combination, there's multifamily along the frontage. Um the school is right across the street and then further out, um it's largely that land use is largely single family residential, so that's kind of what we're working, the neighborhood that we're working in. The site plan shows the building kind of set back, parking lot in the front. There's two driveway entrances, one in Gullitson and one at the south corner that will be at that shared driveway that was approved. And there will be landscaping. And then parking, but that landscaping plan has not been submitted yet. So this is basically the, I mean, these these are the elevations. And. Um so this is a metal building. And you can see that the kind of the design, there will be a vertical siding. And then in the gable areas, there will be um shingles. And then wind scoting along the sides. All the sides and then um the series of windows. The top view is the main entrance and it's it's covered. Um like a porch cover, it's got the larger doors and um so this is the side facing Ronerville Road. And then this is the south side here with another entrance. And you can see the the porch overhang, porch covering and the posts here. And then this is the east side, which won't be visible except from the neighboring, the cul-de-sac maybe. To the east and then this is the north facing, which would be facing Gullitson and you can see there's another door there and the covered walkway or entrance and then there you can see on all the views, there's a a cupola. And we've got shutters around the windows. So it's kind of a. You know, it's it's has a nice um. Nice, you know, feel, it's a nice um, it's a large building, it has a lot of features, it's got a strong presence. But it also, I think, fits in with the with the surrounding area, both in terms of kind of incorporating things that are. Compatible with uh residential. Um buildings and also um. Kind of the historic feel of Ronerville. I might have some. Got some pictures that it will show that, I think, at the end. And this is just a close-up of the west-facing building, the west-facing elevation. And then the applicant submitted some um photographs of similar buildings. And the notes appear building roof gutter shutter color scheme with rooftop feature. veneer not included, so I think when they get up, maybe they can um kind of identify. I think in this case, probably the roof line, the cupolas, the posts. Um there's the the shuttered windows, the vertical siding, so there are a lot of similar features here, so this gives you a kind of. Um an idea of the feel of the building. Same situation here. Two-tone vertical bat siding and um hardy proposed. This is the entrance. I think this is the. This is not the existing senior center. But it's a similar style. Oh, covered entry style, so this represents um the idea for the co- the covered entry. And this demonstrates the gable end. With the shingles on the siding. So I just took the street view, oops, and showed um. These are um barns that are on Ronerville Road with, and I think, you know, the um the design kind of has a barn feel, it's kind of a combination. Of a barn feel and these are, um so this is at Loop Road and this is the Leonardo Equipment Yard. And then going down, this is um. Blue, the blue building is at. The Went site, now it's the Went site, it used to be redwood roofing, before that it was Happerstock. Construction yard and then moving north, this is right behind. Um the tow, the tow yard. And then, oh, this is on the opposite side, so there are um, you know, I think these, I think it's really nice, it's kind of. Maintains, you know, retains the tone, the um rural feel of Ronerville Road and I think the proposed building contributes to that feel, so I think it's a good. A good um compatible design. And then they did in um include. Just as an example, the types of colors that that go with that particular, the company that I think that offers that building that they're planning on buying it from. So that's a pretty brief presentation and um maybe the applicant or agent um would like to. Um add add to that or explain their. You know, the intent or the concept a little bit better than I did. Joan, did you, did any of you the, did any of you want to um? Turn on your mic or um. Otherwise participate. Joan, did you want to have anything to say?
Your mic is still up. There you are. We can hear you now. Nope, you turned it back off. Hit it one more time. She's having some technical. So hit the microphone button, Joan.
You have to wait.
There you are.
Hey, got it.
We're on?
You're on, good job.
Don't know what I did, but I guess it's glad that it was working. Well, we brought posters showing the concept. Um the colors on here are not exactly. Uh as they will be because the program that the that Witch Church uses uh wasn't able to actually. Put in the green color for the building, but um. We're proposing a. Pearl gray roof. Actually, it's um. So the the big white places on the roof are where the um. Solar panels will go. Because of our square footage, we're. Required to have that many solar panels. So we're we're gonna do um a kind of a royal blue. Along the um edges of the roof and also along the bottom of the windows. And then um a more brighter red and I brought this picture, you can see it's um. It's just a door, but it gives kind of the effect of the white trim around it and. So we're working on the colors, we're working on the um. On the landscaping, um. Basically, we are about ready to. Order the building and so we need to know if. You anticipate any changes to a structure itself. And that's what we need to know.
Hey Liz, uh Joan.
Yes.
You're, the building itself, and this is probably for Witcher, it's also. The your front structure that's going off that building, is that going to be? Uh a tube, a tube structure. Uh that mimics wood uh. Or is that wood, a wood, a wood timber structure? That'd be on the front.
You're talking about the front of the building itself?
We're gonna frame the, the building itself will be framed, the walls. It'd be normal wooden construction.
It'll be a a steel. Basic structure.
Well, I understand the the pre-engineered metal building, I understand that, it was just that the the these front uh entrances uh. Uh covered entrances and stuff, and the way it's kind of drawn there. Uh I was wondering, is that going to be a wood structure? Or is that going to be a metal structure?
Well, for for now, we thought it would have a a metal base to it, we may end up. Um putting wood around it, around the the actual poles. But it's gonna have a a metal roof that will match the main roof. And then the the actual structure will be basically metal, but it will.
We'll box in.
We'll box it in, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
There'd be a fish.
Yeah, I guess, I guess this would be for Nicholas, you guys picked up CBC building?
Yeah, I believe it was the CBC building, uh pretty, or same thing that uh Went had recently done, basically.
Okay, and CBC, I have no problem with CBC buildings. Uh. They're a good building. It was just one of those things when I was looking at it, because uh it was one of those kind of things, when you start getting timber framed. Then they have to, they have to gauge in your, the building itself. To be able to handle timber frame coming into it, because we just, just as in the side parts, it's that ridge piece. Going down through it, now how far do we go into the building? Does it, you know, does it go to the edge of the building and hang off it or or is this going to be, because this all gets structurally. Supported inside that metal building. So there gets to be a little. Catcher, a lot of these things actually have, they'll they'll box tube still. And they'll actually make you a gorgeous frame that actually the the still built, the still building erector actually wrecks and he puts all the trim and everything else on there. And then you can either make it look like wood by painting it or. You know, you could do it that way, the other way is actually they come out with. Regular framework and then you gotta frame around it to build something around it. It's it's one of those kind of things, it's um. It's. It's something that you definitely, they need, definitely need to know when they're ordering that building, if it's gonna be wood. Because they have to count for it in there, because it's something I'll sure look out because. It's gotta be bolted, welded, all kinds of stuff in.
Is our, the concept is like the one in Fern, Ferndale, the hardware store there, theirs is framed and we went over and looked at that. And uh with a metal construction, essentially a pole barn. Which is, has a interior and uh wooden framework.
Are, you're you're talking about Nelson's?
Yes.
Okay, that is. If I remember right, that is a CBC building, pre-engineered.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, and I understand the skinning of the building, that that is what I'm talking about, I'm just talking about the structural covering in the front. And actually tying it in, they don't have one of those over there like that, but.
They don't have an entrance like ours with a porch over it. But you're right, that will be all metal.
Okay.
We had talked with Darren Thompson about that and chose to do the metal and then let, you know.
Box in.
Box it in with uh with wood.
Okay, all right. I don't mind talking to Darren about it if you if you tell him to give me a holler. So that way we're all connected up, so we're, we got it covered for you.
Sounds good.
All right.
I have a question, if I could interject. It's to the Fortuna Senior Center, can I do that Chairman Mobley?
Absolutely, anything you want.
Are you guys currently located at three thousand Newburgh Road, Suite B?
Yes.
And I'm just curious, talk to me a little more about the uh, that's the big Gene Lucas Center, correct?
Yes.
And so tell me about your guys' motivations to move.
Well. As soon as we moved in here, I'm Marcia Hayes, I'm president of the senior center. A- as soon as we had our first function in here, we came to the conclusion that it just was not large enough. Uh we're paying for five thousand square feet, which sounds like a lot, but it's but it's not usable for us. Uh we don't have a kitchen, uh we don't have access to the kitchen, we have a second floor, which is a definite handicap and the exercise room. Is on the second floor, which we have people that come for um tai chi and some other uh physical therapy types of of exercise. They have to go down to the center of the building. In the Gene Lucas Center, take an elevator upstairs, then come back down along the whole inside of our building and then go in the back. So there were, there were things that were just not um. Didn't end up to be usable, good intentions, it's a beautiful building, uh we have nice things here, it just does not suit our purpose and we only have one classroom. And we don't have, we have a couple small rooms that that are not usable and and great lobbies, but they're just not uh usable for us. And so we've had this money for a number of years that we've invested and we figured. That it's time with it, we build something that suits us. We're very happy to be here, but not real happy because it's not usable.
But the first function that we had, which was a potluck, where we had our membership in general attend. We were so cramped that if we'd had a fire, we'd never have gotten out.
It was pretty bad.
I mean, it was that bad, the tables had to be put so close to accommodate the the crowd. And that was our, that was the thing that threw us over the edge.
And not to be facetious, because I'm totally in support, but did did we all arrive at that situation by going through a similar process as this one?
Yes. Yeah, we came, we came to the conclusion the last time they were here to talk about what what their intentions were to get to this point.
That's great, I'm supportive. And do you guys know of how that old space will be used when you guys exit? Because right now it's only a lease and you'll be free, correct?
Yes, uh we have a, we have a month, a year, a year lease, which we can extend and we're ready to leave, but uh Dennis Scott had said to me that they have other. Other um entities that are looking to rent it, so they don't seem to be um. There, there's no animosity between either group, it's just, it's the way it is, it just ended up this way.
Perfect. Can I have a follow-up question that's about the design of the property? Um I see the easement on here that looks like it goes back to, I was pulling it up on. A map website, it goes back to thirty-eight sixty-five Ronerville Road, I think. And it says on here easement, it's labeled two different things. Uh existing easement to Went slash Wright and existing easement to Thompson. How much traffic do we anticipate coming out of that easement rather than on Gullitson?
Um I, you know, I don't recall the, we don't expect a lot. Um. You know, basically, um it allows a second access, so we, you know, it's it's the fire department likes to have two access points. So it's a safety um feature. Um. The. So each, so the the right-of-way, the road will center on the property line, so each uh of the two properties side by side will each dedicate, I think it's about twenty feet each. Creating one common driveway and it's really intended for um. Um for the property in the rear, so that it's a commercially zoned property, so they will need a driveway, uh right, it's not developed as commercial. Um but eventually it could be because it's commercially zoned property uh um that's on the south side and then so it'll be shared with. The senior center, so really it's, you know, it's. It will allow, having the two driveways will allow. Um, you know, the traffic to kind of be dispersed and not burden either Ronerville Road or um Gullitson.
If you had to estimate then. Would you say fifty-fifty, fifty percent of the traffic going out that easement and fifty on Gullitson?
I would say that's fair. I mean, kind of depending on, I think it would be probably if you're coming from the south, you know, it might be, you're gonna be probably. Um using uh Ronerville Road. Or uh you know, probably some of the drivers will use Gullitson because it's just a bigger entryway and it might feel a little easier to use. Um and then coming from the north, um people would be using Gullitson, I would think.
So I have kind of some comments on access and that.
One is, it's a solid project and it can't get done soon enough and I support this thing 100%. When, when I, but when I look at the layout, say you have a potluck, you got 100 people in the potluck, that's two and a half people per car. You got quite a distance between the back and the front. And if, if people are coming in the front, dropping off, parking in the back, when things coming over, you either got cars coming and going both ways to pick people up. Or you've got people exiting through the kitchen to get out the back. And if, if that's part of the plan, you know, people exiting through the kitchen is not necessarily optimal, but you probably need to have that access. And so maybe you want to have some kind of clear path for people to exit out the back, get to the car and get out to Gullikson. Just because the potluck, it's really good food, draws a whole lot of people every time. Does that, any of that make sense?
But you know, one, one thing, let me say about people exiting during a potluck. We, we've had large potlucks at, at our other, our other site. People don't just jump up and everybody runs out. It's sort of a gradual thing, because people visit and pick up their food and somebody talks. And it, it's just not like you're in the movie and the door, movie's over and the door's open and everybody runs. This is a, this is a social thing. And so it, it probably takes a lot longer than you can imagine for people to leave. Because they have to go back and pick up their plate and they have to visit. Oh, it's not a gush for the door. Trust me, because we only had one door at the other place and, and they weren't lined up going out the door. It's just a very casual circumstance. It's, 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 it's not a run out the door, because people, they hate to leave their friends. So it's, it's visiting as you're walking out the door, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, no, I get that, Marsha, I mean, I, I just, you know, a lot of cars in a relatively small space unless you can get some of the traffic heading out the back. If you can get people out the back, they go out the back and then take the car out the back and you have a little less, you know, congestion in parking lots is, is, can be a challenge at times. For me anyway, you know? But you're good, this is, this is a good thing, the sooner you get it done, the better.
Thanks.
Katie.
seniors do a lot of carpooling also.
Katie, do we have anybody on waiting to talk?
We do not, we did get one public comment, Liz was going to read into the record.
Okay, can you do that, please?
Yeah, so this is an email from Vincent Pelosi, dated March 9th, so it was submitted today at 11 o'clock. It says, please ensure that there are sidewalks and bike lanes to the new building site along Ronerville Road from the center of town, thank you.
That, then, that's obviously being put in.
I got one question to the sidewalks and stuff. On the back of the building, it's off your property line, there is the sidewalk that was built that separates at one time, but splitting down the middle of this property. Do you guys have access to that sidewalk?
I've, I've walked that, I haven't seen the sidewalk.
No, it's more of a planting area.
We have around the back of the building, a, a, a five-foot walkway that traverses the entire length of the back of the building.
Oh, you know, I do know what you're talking about. There is a, a parking, there is a walkway from other warehouse that came to the front lot. However, we're not, we don't have an exit off the back of the building that would join up with that walkway. We took a sidewalk along the back of the building though.
I just remember, I didn't, Liz, did we actually get a sidewalk? Did they actually put a sidewalk against that planter, the backside of that landscaping buffer?
So you're talking about the east property line?
Yeah.
This, this common property line with the, with the building behind it.
Yep.
To the east, so that shows on the site plan as being on the adjoining property. So it's not, it's not on this property and there's not an easement. So they don't have the legal rights to use it. You know, whether they design it to be able to use it, I mean, that would be nice.
That was the first thing I looked at was, anybody coming down Gullikson or from Gullikson is basically gonna, gonna have to go down the sidewalk of Gullikson around the corner, all the way to the front of this building to take the path of travel to cross into the building. Even with these parked cars in that side of the parking lot, there is a walkway that's going to go around the building, where I can see part of it drawn in. It, we have a transformer that kind of stops and blocks and that could be moved over to that planter anywhere. But it was, I just kind of looked at it going, boy, the sidewalk goes right there. And, well, but it's on the neighboring property, which would allow people to park their cars in parking spaces one through seven and step onto the sidewalk. I don't know if that's even something that's, it, it just, it would make it very, it'd make it easier for anybody that did happen to park on Gullikson getting in and anybody in that side of the parking lot to be able to walk around the building.
Yeah, at this point, it would be something they would need to talk to, I think Went.
Yep.
Construction still owns that, that property. And it's something that they would need to talk about and then get designed into this plan.
Because if I remember correctly, there is one there and that's part of their path of travel to get to their building. They put it in the middle there, because remember their entrance kind of came in?
Right.
It'll go over there and then it squeezes over, so I think, I think it's already there, but it, yeah, it would be.
It's, it is there.
Yeah, you'd have to talk to the neighbors about getting permission to use their sidewalk.
I mean, it would help when they have overflow parking on Gullikson Drive.
Yep. Anybody walking down Gullikson, it would automatically turn right there, take that walkway right to the, right to the building.
That, that utility area that's in the center of the eastern property there, that has direct access to our neighbors in the east. And you're right, there is a walkway there. It goes, you walk, it's left open, there's a a raised curb for the rest of the area, but there is a, a pass through to the eastern property there that has been concreted in that utility.
Yeah. And that was where they were going, going to use it as their drive-through, their future drive-through on their other designs, but it's something, something I, I guess you're talking to the neighbors about.
Put another curb in there, so the old people, we don't like to negotiate over curbs. But so that would be accessible.
Yep.
We get a rent with our neighbors to use their parking lot on weekends.
I'm sure they won't mind.
So I had a question, maybe directed toward Liz or, or possibly someone there at the city. Do we indeed, in response to that public comment, we have sidewalks and bike access from downtown, or do we not?
Ronerville Road, no, there's no, there's not a complete sidewalk from downtown. So the two access roads, you know, directions would be on Ronerville Road from the north or on Redwood Way from the west. And Ronerville Road is definitely deficient in that regard. Oh, there's some narrow, you know, some kind of more narrow strips. And then Redwood Way probably has a little bit more width, but there's a couple of sections, there's one section right as you turn off of Ronerville Road where there are no sidewalks, but I know that that's in the, you know, in the vision of the city engineer, the city manager to at least get sidewalks on Redwood Way where there's a little bit more width.
There is also an existing bus stop right there in the center of our property on.
So the answer to the public comment that one item is basically, we have to wait for a larger amount of public infrastructure in our city, correct?
Yes. There is currently, yeah, no safe pedestrian walkway from downtown.
Okay, what's next?
Okay, so I think we kind of public comment. We technically have to do that, right Katie?
Yes.
Thought so. Okay, so I'll open up the public comment, anybody out there that wants to be heard on this subject, please call in. We'd like to hear from anybody and everybody about it. And there it is, right there, Katie's flashing it up there. In the meantime, while we're talking, while we're waiting, any of the commissioners have anything they want to talk about, about this? Bring it up.
If you want, I can, I can put the elevations back on the screen if you had any comments on the elevations, on the design of the building. Or if you're satisfied with it and don't need to see the elevations presented again.
I think whoever designed it did a great job, it fits so well right in, into the, the area. And I'm excited to be able to walk by and admire it.
I'm kind of shocked between the amount of grief we got from the Went project to this project. I'm really shocked, we're not hearing from anybody. It's not that I don't like the project, I love the project, it's just, I just remember that project was very controversial at the moment, and this one's just a hair bigger. Katie, we hearing anybody, seen anything?
No.
Good, let's move this on. Okay, we're going to close public comment right now. And then we're going to bring it back to the planning commissioners, everybody. I don't think we need a motion on this, we just need a consensus that I believe that this is a good plan, that anybody want to see anything changed? As far as the building's concerned, the size of it, anything? It looks like this, they want to order this thing before we say no. So myself, I think it's a good project, it looks like it's going to be very nice when it's all said and done. Looking for your comments though. Come on, Sandy, tell me something.
I'm, I'm for the project, I love it.
Okay, Mark?
I'm supportive.
Stephanie?
I love it.
How about you Larry?
I'm in 100%.
Okay, folks. So we don't have to make a motion tonight, so you're looking for a okay to do what you're doing? It sounds like you've got 100% A-OK from us. It looks like it's going to be a great building and we can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much. Now all we have to do is spend the money.
There you go, there's, there's the hard part. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight, we really appreciate you guys doing this. It's, it's going to be a big deal for our community and we appreciate it, can't wait. I'm getting close to being there, you can see the, you know, the white and the beard, we're going to be there soon. Come knocking on your door.
Some of us are already there, you know?
It's still got a little dark, I'm waiting, I'm almost there.
All right, I wanted to pipe in, we appreciate your guys' time, investment, all, all the preparation that you put in it, you folks at the senior center, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
We can't wait.
Good job. So Liz, anything going on that we need to talk about tonight, anything from staff report?
I don't have anything in addition.
Well, you know what that means, guys. Quick, easy night.
Thank you Joan.
Looking for a public comment, I mean, excuse me, looking for a motion to close.
I'm moved.
Second.
Katie?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Saitz.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all, I really appreciate everybody coming tonight.
Good night.
See you for breakfast tomorrow, Mark.